Come to order. It's a special township trustees work session, January 5th.
No.
9th. 9th, 2024. See, I need new glasses. Under old business, we have none, so we move right into new business. We're here tonight to talk about design options for new building and financial financing, how to pay for it if we decide on what it is. So the first option is to talk about the options and what they are.
So I have three options for you guys so far. So option three is on the very end next to Phil. Option two and option one as you go that way.
Okay.
So option one is the first option that we came up with. Um, I don't know, maybe middle of last year. And that has to do with the maintenance building that would be in the very back of the property. And then the administration slash service department offices would be in the front. So you would enter from the side of the building. That would be closest to this building. Like where the parking's in L, you would come in on that L-shaped, like the top part of the parking lot. Yes. So it would come in from that side.
Do you mind if we all kind of walk down?
No, that's fine.
And we can, we can hear you while you're talking.
Is there any difference in square footage basically from when we were first talking down to first down there?
Um, yeah, it goes up in square footage. So the, the smallest square footage footprint is this building. It's 18,223 square feet.
First.
Yeah, the very first option one.
Okay. So this is where we started.
Right. So the township, the township office, like the township trustees meeting is the very front part of the building. Yeah, that part right there. Yep. So you would come in there for the meeting. Actually, the entrance, I believe, is on the same side as like how you enter in the building, like for offices, but you just enter at the other end. Yeah, right there where Phil's finger is. So you'd come in the trustees meeting room right there. And then our office entrances would be further up, closer to the maintenance building end, right there. Yeah. So then the offices would kind of face, face, what is this? If this is north, so it'd face the south.
I think you're up here, you know, that's reception and then you will be.
Somewhere in there, yeah. So our office.
Or the other side with the conference space.
Right. So it has what we need. So it's got extra conference rooms. It's got an area in the middle for like a work room, like a storage room. So we can put like special event stuff, um, the copier, records.
The blank space?
Yep, all in there.
Okay.
So and there's bathrooms in the middle. And then the service department's offices would be on that, on the opposite wall. Right in there, yeah. And then I think there's a door that you can get in to get out into the garage.
Yes.
Yeah. So the very end of that is going to be like a shared kitchen. There'll be like a shared kitchen, shared bathroom, shared locker room, um, before you actually enter into the garage. And then the garage gives us eight different spaces. It gives us a middle bay where you can kind of pull in, like if you have a fully loaded trailer, you could pull it in the middle and there's two garage doors. And then on the very end, like towards the top of the drawing, that would be a back in like bay where we could pull in and wash vehicles. Right there, yeah.
And that has the catch bases and everything else in it?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, we'd have to put in all the.
And the concept is the same for all three options?
Uh, it's a, they're, they vary a little bit, but it's still, it's still the office space plus the garage. It's just different configurations of it. Yeah, the last option has the, the most garage doors.
This is uh, basically same square footage as that one, but this one is 1,215, 1,300 additional square feet.
Yeah. Oh, I guess option three would be the smallest.
Do you know why they increased the size that much?
It's got to do with the garage.
I think the garages are the same. I don't understand why they increased it by 1,500 square feet. Million dollars. I mean, contingency, million dollars on all of it, but they're all roughly the same price.
Yep. So then I guess it just boils down to what do you want it to look like?
Which one does Bill look like? Which one's what? Bill's?
I think he likes option three because it has eight garage doors.
Has how many?
Eight garage doors. He would rather drive through the building, like have the pull-throughs.
I did.
So option two is option one, but it's just like they, they back up to each other like this. So it's the garage behind it and the office building is, is the same width and length to kind of hide the, the maintenance part of the garage, of the structure. So, and I believe, let's see. So this one, this one again, it's, it's. It's all the township offices are going to be to the right side of the building. Like, yeah, right there where Phil's finger is. That's, that's the trustees meeting room. And then everything else, like same thing, same concept where the offices kind of go all the way around and then there's workspace and storage space directly in the middle with some restrooms. And then like the break room, um, the locker rooms, the bathrooms, those are along the back wall before you get into the garage area.
These office areas, do they have designated trustees, one room for all trustees?
Uh, no, we did not do that, but we can add that if you want that.
More square footage.
Yeah.
More cost. I'm just, right now, all of those offices aren't going to be used, are they?
No, we have two, I think I have two extra ones.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about. It kind of troubles me a little bit to come in and sign checks and interrupt your, your work, you know, sit there and ask you all kinds of questions.
Oh, well, we can make one of them that room.
Yes.
And then we just have, I just had an extra one just in case, you know?
Just, just to talk down the road.
Okay.
For any, anyone, you know, you've got enough office space.
Yeah, we did, we did. We planned for two extra offices.
Well, you wanted to hire a park manager for one.
The board wanted to hire a park manager.
All right. Semantics. We wanted to hire a park manager for one of those two offices.
Right.
So all three of 10 offices.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's the concept. I can see why Bill likes 103. Because when he's got to fleet that many vehicles, it's hard to park like a dealership. It's easier when you're moving vehicles in and out than you've got it to do with.
From future, from future cost standpoint, I like the idea of fewer garage doors. We spend a lot of money on garage door repairs and replacements. You're basically looking at two, I think maybe three versus, uh, what, eight or nine?
Say that again, Joe. Looking at three versus eight or nine. You're talking.
Garage doors.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one Bill likes, he likes, he likes trucks that can pull in and back out of the same garage door.
You could.
I don't know that it's, I, I don't work in that area, so I, I don't know how, how less efficient it is to have the bays that they simply pull out of and drive out the opposite door. I mean, that doesn't seem like a big deal to me if it's responsible for a lot of cost sake.
You can take this maintenance bay, cut and paste it into option one or two. Just rotate it 90 degrees.
True.
You cut, you cut this off and put that on.
Yeah.
I think it's more expensive over the years.
Is that where it's? It's in the back of the building, so. Yeah. I was concerned if it's this for the front, I didn't want to look at all the rest.
To me, the only one that visually looks good from the front is that middle option. I mean, if you can visualize that facade, looking at it from Union Cemetery Road, the other two, you're looking at kind of the end of the building. You have to go around one side or the other to be at the front of the building, which to me is not visually appealing, certainly.
Must be some kind of error here, yeah. On all of these, what's listed on this layout here, it's the same square footage as down here. And this one says 17,123, not 18.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be the 18,474. I think that's a misprint.
Okay. Now, which view down here is the car?
So it's going to be.
This?
This is the view from the front, right here. So this is how you go in. You go in here and you go into this door and you go to the trustees meeting room. You come in this door and you go right here to our offices. So you'll, you'll literally see this view from Union Cemetery. You won't see the garage. So that building there is that, the one in Ada, Ohio that you guys like, the white building? That's what that one is, option three.
Except you're not looking at that from the same angle. The, the picture they like is face on. That, it's turned. So you're not looking at that face on, uh, the view that they like when they saw that building. You know, it won't look like that built here because you're not.
Right, because we had to turn it to fit on this wall.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not going to look like that at all as you pull into the building. Another feature consideration that we were talking about at one time was the ability to, um, uh, to fence off the rear parts of that property because people went in and out of there all hours of the day and night and they got no business back there most times. And the only one you can effectively do that with is the one that has the parking lot out front. See, the others, the parking lot wraps around the building, so there's really no good way to block off the back part. You could move that building forward a little bit, I think, the way it's situated there.
Well, they all have parking out front, it's just.
Well, but the one is restricted to the front.
This one persists further back.
Yeah, the one is, the one in the center is the one where the parking is restricted to the front. And you could.
But you give them access to go all back there anyways.
We need access. We don't have to have access for, for.
Yeah, see ours.
What do we need access back there for?
From here, this way.
What's that?
Why do we need this access back there?
Uh, they're tight. He was talking about large, like trucks that deliver salt or something like that, trailer trucks, large things. I mean, if you take a big truck back there on those others, they've got a finagle way around to turn around to get back out or to back out. Whereas with the loop behind that building, they can just drive in and drive around and go out.
Wouldn't you have a little spur here to back the truck up to near the salt house?
Well, I don't know what size trucks deliver, deliver salt.
What you do is you put your spreader, loader, conveyor belt in, in this location and you run out of the truck on this leg and through that thing that Phil told them. They have a piece of equipment we share with someone, the salt, uh.
Yeah, we have a conveyor.
So that could work this way, but you, you have to back it in, like in here.
And how big are the trucks that go around and pick up the dumpsters? Those are pretty big.
The recycling, the recycling trucks you're talking about?
Hmm?
The Ronkey recycling trucks?
Where, where are those now, the recycling dumpsters?
They're right out here.
They're right off the law.
I don't know. That's the thing. We would have to figure out a spot to put them in. I, I kind of was thinking that maybe when you come, like you come through the parking lot here, maybe you just put it right here. That way people can come in, come around, drop off their stuff and. Right. Those garages would be in the back, but I'm like, once our administration building comes down, maybe it could be right there.
These come down too?
No.
No.
One of the guys want to keep those.
Had them right there. You want to keep these garages up? Why?
They said they need them for storage.
Put the bag in someplace. What, what, what goes in the park maintenance building? Anything?
Uh, yeah, he has all.
The whole, the whole idea is to construct this thing, get our equipment in and out of the weather, right? And create a solid.
The big equipment that they don't, they really can't house all of it now.
Yeah.
So my guess is those garage doors right now, like they would put the backhoe in it, they would put the loader in it, they would put, um, other pieces of equipment that they can't fit. Well, they've put in there now, but they can't put the big dump trucks in there. And then they have, usually end up having to move all that stuff out during the winter to put the big dump trucks in there when they load them with salt.
Okay.
So the big, the biggest thing was to get the big dump trucks under one area where they could, we could put the plow on it and everything and it would fit in the garage.
These are all the same size trucks shown?
Yeah, those are all our big ones.
Okay.
And then we have, I think, like one or two small ones.
And the wash bay, take the biggest pieces of equipment back.
Yes.
Okay. So we can do this, this is what you can see. As if it's somewhere in this configuration. And this. If you turn this, if you turn this, Bill, which is what you're saying, can you configure it? Turn it. This is the leg you want to see, right?
Yeah, you could, you could probably tweak it just a little bit.
Well, I don't know how this would that.
You couldn't turn it 90 degrees, but you could turn it a little bit.
So you can, yeah. This is the high roof, right? That's the high, yeah, but that's on the fixture here. Just like this. This accorded. This configuration, turn this way.
But if you do that, you're going to see the garages and that's what you guys didn't want to see.
Yep.
Now that this is right here, and this faces the car. Now that you're talking, this should be dumping the, like, parking. Yeah, that's already back. When you turn this, it's already back. And this way, if you can see it, and then you have to turn this one. And cut, cut this off. It really is this. Straightly. Just cut, stand that stuff over there. So now you're good for now, physical planning? Was it the planning portion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how it is right now. Like what Ken is pointing at, that's how exactly how that building will be.
This would actually be rotated like that. So the meeting rooms.
So you're talking about rotating the trustees meeting room in our office space, but leaving the garage exactly where it is.
Mm-hmm. See what's in part of that rotated, you know? Cut it off there. And rotate it for the office. Cut this out, see where it's at. Like that. So maybe we'll get a little bit of configuration to it. But we get the same square footage.
Hmm?
Need the same square footage, same layout as far as I know. Just the pieces are arranged in a order. So the budget should be the same square footage.
So I just want to make sure I understand you. You're taking this, leaving this part here and just doing this.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then in those sections.
Okay.
In center, you cut this off and in center, it's like, between the legs. So the second part, are we finished with the first part discussing the configuration?
Yeah, if you, if that's what you guys like, then I'll just go back to them.
So what are you doing? They're cutting this off?
No, leaving this here, but then rotating it like this, so it goes like this, which would actually leave both buildings during the construction process, so it actually works better.
What are you doing with this?
Taking this part and doing this. So this goes like this.
You like two legs?
Just cut it off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then rotate these like this.
Okay.
Get that bump out, which we have to go somewhere.
Yeah, it'll go somewhere else, I mean, not a big deal.
Yeah. Okay. But the second part.
That would look better.
Yeah.
Then you'll approach a more attractive front.
Right.
Right from the front.
Mm-hmm.
That would look better.
Okay. Second part is how much are you going to cost and who will pay for it? And I look at this, yeah, there's a million dollars between top and bottom, but we're talking six million dollars for whichever configuration it is over here. That's the way I see it. So the question is how many will pay for it?
So let's talk about that. What's available?
Let's wait till Phil comes back.
Yeah.
Are there, just looking at option three, are there, are there any other amenities that you see that we need that I did not address or we forgot?
You mean in the administration and in the administrative area?
Well, like how do you like the trustees meeting room? Do you like the way that it's set up? Because right now, when you come in, you come in and the, the dais is going to be right out on the other side of the wall and there's going to be a ramp coming up to it. There'll be, I think, room for 50 to 75 chairs. We have a, an executive area where we can do a conference room. We have a small kitchenette. We have a media room. We have a mechanical room. And then the restrooms are on the other side of the hallway, kind of like a shared area between us and, um.
Sits way out in front, doesn't it?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we've got all our bases covered in, in your meeting room. If there's any other things that you can think of that you would need or want. We've got a coat rack.
Oh, you just did what I was going to do with my handy dandy scissors.
Oh, that he cut it up.
Now that that's there. I can go back up and look at it to see how, how it orients.
I just figured you guys wanted a different angle versus the way it is there. Like instead of being linear, maybe turn it like this. So it goes like that, not when you're visually blocking this.
Then you're pushing this.
No, 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 leave that there.
Here?
But just take this, instead of rotating it 90 degrees, just rotate it like this. So it does this. However, you have the entrance, you got, like in here.
I think that's construction wise, that would be, playing with cables and everything else.
Probably true.
Well, you're talking bigger, you're talking big design change. It's just not a matter of turning it.
Yeah.
Well, it's just on the roof, yes. There'd be design change on the roof.
Storage?
No, but there'd be a design change on the, two halves connect to.
This is the trustee's?
You know, you're not, I think you're simplifying it.
Why are they using this?
See, the only way you're going to see this from the front is if you rotate it, not 90 degrees, 45 degrees.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah, but then you've got a point of the building here coming out like that from there.
No, you can still square it off, but you just.
Then this is not going to be the front you're looking at. This is going to be the front you're looking at.
The way they, the way they have it now, that's how that would be. You're going to see that. That's how they've got it.
Exactly. That's what you're gonna see, the side of the building.
Right, so that's why I said turn it forty-five degrees, and then you're looking at like this, you're looking at both fronts.
That's the look they want.
I know, but...
But it's not practical. To me, the most visually appealing front is that center. If you can imagine the facade of that building, that is the most attractive one up there. Unless you could turn that whole building sideways, and you can't.
Again?
Yeah.
Turned on kitchen area, kitchenette area.
It was that bump out.
Did we lose it?
Probably, it was this, right here.
Yeah, that's right. That's, and this could be, of course, you have to take it out of here.
Yeah.
And we're thinking that this podium, or that the seating should be moved over.
Well, you can't because of the ramp. You gotta have a ramp to get to it, to meet ADA standards.
Ramp coming in from outside?
No, ramp coming in to get up into the dais, it's right here. Starts right here and goes this way. So you gotta, you gotta have a certain rise over run, and so that's why it pushes it.
Gotcha.
Well, I can ask him to see if they can flip. I had it flipped the other way, but they flipped it back because they wanted...
She don't have a call back.
Yeah. It's probably something like that, yeah.
Yeah, just twelve to one, per amp.
I think.
So for one foot, you're gonna do twelve feet, and that's less than three. So. Take time for it.
Swoosh down a little bit.
I think we're zeroing in on option three with marks. It's all the same, same price range, six and up.
Do you guys want it to be where those garages are gone? Because if so, then we have to build onto the garage that we have. We have to build more bays.
So what?
You said something about those garages not disappearing, and if you want them to disappear, then we would have to build onto the garage that's proposed.
Were you talking about?
No.
This portion?
No, 'cause you had mentioned those garages, you thought they were going away. And I said, no, the guys wanted to keep them for storage.
I was just news.
So if, but if you really want them gone, then we would just have to add on to this.
I think that's something that you look at one day or another. And you probably need it, if you need it.
Yeah.
They say they need them, so...
And why eliminate perfectly usable buildings?
Yeah, they say they need them.
It's just their...
Right, it just won't fit.
You're not in keeping with the architect.
Right, it's not gonna keep up with, you're right, it won't. But I'm just saying, if you don't want that, then you will have to, then you'll have to make the garage bigger.
Couldn't we make another project, or just change the facade on that, and make it look the same?
I wouldn't change, those garages are old.
I know, but just the facade, just the front, just the optics of what it looks like. Make it fit better.
I'm just building up, I just built, add on to this garage, and just...
Well, you wanna add on to those garages in addition to the new garages?
No, add on to the new garage. I would just build one big garage, if that's your goal, is for everything to look the same.
You never get an architect a pencil. I'm an engineer too, so...
I was gonna say, you're just as bad.
But I'm gonna stand it. I'm forgiven. So we can just smoosh these two together. And put the right tighter room out here off the side. Yeah, for me, access, a book of access from the garage area. What I was thinking, Ken, is that if this no longer has this tip, I'm not sure which direction, is that south?
That would be south.
Southwest. That is south.
Cause my government is up here.
So if we no longer... Southwest, that's not out there. ...this room anymore? Because we protect all this, and we move all this over. It's really just dependent upon these terminals, for the trucks and in the left. So we can push that over, and then you can see more of this entry from the right.
Okay.
This side as well.
Okay.
Makes sense? And this, right now, pencil this bump out.
Yeah.
We took it out of where it was bumped out, and here.
Yeah.
And so it's all started.
Okay.
And I would... I'm not sure, can you get that?
Okay.
I can fix that, just so you force everybody in.
Right, yeah, you, you're right. We can always put a door in the back.
I was gonna say, you're gonna need an emergency exit back there somewhere.
Yeah.
You can come out of the, come out of the, um... Breakfast or, what do you call lunch area?
We could just, we'll reconfigure it so that it's shaped or formed.
Going from room to room to room, to the part getting out.
Right.
We're interested in this kind of facade.
Okay.
But if you look at it right now, it's got like two doors here. I don't know what that is, this one is. So here, you don't wanna have two doors here, double door. If we took those out, and made this look, you know, windowed or whatever, like that.
Does that have a good one?
Yeah.
Did you want a good one too?
I would, I would think about this being one big open space.
Okay.
And instead of these being all sub- divided offices, just maybe like...
Look better?
Yeah, like high halls, but open. Open.
Okay.
So if you can have a light in there. Are you talking about the roof being open? That is, they're really, like, a lot of windows. So. The future is...
Okay, got it.
Okay, we're talking about money?
Would better.
Phil, was there any other thing that you saw in the site plan that needs to be addressed? Like, I was asking Ken why you weren't in the room. Just we have like the podium, the ramp, then we have, you know, the multiple places to sit, we have a conference room, we have a little kitchenette, a media room, and a mechanical room. Is there any other thing that you think of, can think of, that I need to address as far as the trustees' room is concerned?
What's the media room?
Yeah, the meeting room.
What, oh, meeting.
Meeting.
Sorry, meeting room, if I didn't pronounce it.
No, I mean, just like we already talked about, I agree, it'd be nice to have the meeting room centered.
Centered, okay.
And maybe the ramp has to, I mean, it's already shown turning around the corner in that room. Maybe it just extends a bit closer to the exit door, and that allows the dais to shift out. In, in the lunchroom, there is, there is equipment in there for fixing lunches and things like that. So there's kitchen stuff in there, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's why we couldn't find it, it was already in that room, Phil. Okay.
It's the one, the wall, that we cut based on?
If you look. There's a long wall.
Yes.
So we planned on just having like a refrigerator, a sink, maybe a microwave in there, just as a small kitchenette, you know, where you could...
I'm sure they want a TV in there, but...
In the kitchenette?
That's, that's their break room.
No, your kitchenette is separate.
Where?
In the, in the meeting room.
Oh, we're not talking meeting room, we're talking about the employees.
Yeah, in the lunchroom, and the employees, we were planning on having a full kitchen in there, so that we could have a stove, a microwave, a refrigerator, a sink.
Okay. However it fits. So it's all in one room, running to it?
Right.
Okay. But with respect to the, the meeting area with its conference room, so on for executive session and so on.
Right.
You're talking about that separate room next to it is a kitchenette, which would only be simplest.
Yeah, just like a simple little kitchen, kinda like this idea, but a little bit bigger. Cause we don't really ever use it. We use it more as the media room than anything, so... But we do, on this plan, we do have a separate media room, and then a mechanical room.
So we're really looking at what?
The only thing I can see on the office side is, um... I'll count the offices again and make sure that there's an office for you guys to sign checks and all that kinda stuff. And then, I didn't see a copier room, like where we put the copier, so we'll have to figure that out.
For whom? For the administrative staff or for trustees?
Anybody, anybody that's part of our organization could use the copier. Not people from the outside, but there's no room on here for the copier, so we'll have to put it somewhere.
So be a copy room for administration and public works?
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah.
Maybe somewhere in the middle.
This, um... This open block, what used to be at the bottom of option three, open space, was that gonna be storage or what?
Yeah, it just says general storage, it's room one twenty-seven.
But if you went, if you went straight up, you already have a storage area. It looks like it's mostly access.
That's for records, that's for record storage.
All right. So depending on where the door is into that area, Kim, you could put your copier in there, couldn't you? In that big, big box? Cause that's not too far away from the entrance?
Yeah, but I don't really want it in a room, it just needs to be like, maybe that room just needs to be made smaller, and the copier just needs to be on the end of it or something.
Okay.
Like at the end of that corridor.
All right, then, then you work with the designers, Morton or whatever, to see where it can be accommodated. Is it in any of the other options now?
No, I, I...
Okay.
I just sat here and noticed it, I looked on all of them, and I don't think there's anything for the copier.
Okay. Okay, now where's the bunks?
Bunks?
Yeah. We got, we got these crews that, the crews that stay out all night plowing and so on and so forth.
It's called the fire station. The fire station has extra bedrooms.
But we don't use them, because we put our guys up in a hotel, the motel, don't we?
Nobody spends the night here. Not since I've been here.
Well, we haven't had some really bad weather since we've been here, I guess.
No, we, that's why we have extra bedrooms over at the fire station, just for that purpose.
Okay. I know, we used to pay for the employees, we had deals made with the hotels.
We don't need any deals, we have extra rooms at the fire station.
That's why I mentioned bunks, you know, to try and cut down on that. Okay. Future growth, is there any opportunity for going up?
I did not put any in, I... Then you gotta put an elevator in, and I just...
Yeah.
Didn't wanna do that.
It's cost-burdened, it is.
Well, we already have a couple extra rooms, right?
Yeah.
So what kinda future growth are you thinking of?
Well, I mean, we could add a couple extra rooms, just in case. You know, it doesn't hurt to do that. It's only a couple hundred more square feet.
This building has gotta last for how many years? You know, and serve our township, which is a growing township, and, well, maybe it is.
Yeah.
Took us ten years to get a thousand people, didn't it? I mean, I think we're, we're going the way of Montgomery down the road, and that is tear downs and build McMansions or something. I'm afraid of that, but...
As designed, it certainly increases space that we need.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Over and above what we have now.
For sure.
Right.
Yep.
The only thing I'm not sure of is, this is going to entail tearing down the building that the service crews in now, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I don't know how many offices they have over there, and...
Three.
Three, so we've covered that.
Yeah. That's why I said, if we just add a couple more offices onto the end, like Phil was talking, if we eliminate those doors, we just put offices on the end.
Yeah.
And then we've got all the office space that we would ever need.
That makes sense.
We wanna make that end look good, though. Whatever, architecturally, we have to do.
We need that pond. You what, we need that pond? I'll get started on it.
I'll bring the hose. Okay, so where's the money coming from?
Well, we've got...
So this, this is at the high end, five point eight?
Yeah, it's...
Five eight.
Yeah, four nine to five eight.
So five eight, one two...
And I had the thing updated, the five to six million.
So mentally, I just rounded off. So how much ARPA, right off the top?
We've got five twenty-three left over.
Okay. We have five, what was that?
Five hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Left over from?
From all the other years that we've had it.
But that isn't totally available for debt service. What are you talking?
No, we would have to pay it upfront and borrow less, is what we would have to do, like, use it upfront.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we financed five point two.
And we've got some TIF money we could use, we've got...
TIF money?
Yeah.
We got, what, million two?
After this year, we've got a million six that'll be left over.
After twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Cause this, this thing that we just had January second, said we had two point seven in there, but I know that floats.
Right, and then we're gonna get more money next year, plus we're gonna get catch-up money, and then obviously, we would owe the schools their portion, and then whatever we have left over.
Don't they get theirs directly?
This year they did, but next year they won't, because we'll, it'll come to us first, and then we have to make payment to them.
I didn't think we got any of that, what, are you talking twenty twenty-four? This year, and you're talking twenty twenty-four?
We didn't get any this year, so, I mean, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
We're supposed to get catch-up money in twenty twenty-four, but I don't know what that looks like.
Okay. I mentally, I computed that we were getting like two and a half million total in the old TIF, and we would probably only have like a third of that in, going forward, in this one, the fifteen-year extension. I don't know why, I kinda bore in on those rough numbers like that. So I'm thinking we're gonna have mostly eight hundred thousand or so TIF money to play with.
Well, we'll get, if we're gonna get, we're gonna roughly get about twenty-eight percent, so we'll have... So we'll have about a quarter of a million dollars every year that we'll get, that we get to keep.
We get 28% of?
Of the 800,000.
That's after the schools have been taken care of?
Yeah. But roughly, I don't know that for sure. Don't write that number down because I don't know what this number's gonna be.
I'm off by factor of three. I'm thinking we're getting two and a half million in the old TIF.
No, we're only getting 800,000 a year.
That's what we had been getting?
Yes.
And it built up to where we have?
2.2 whatever, yeah.
It was 2.7, but we get commitments out of that, I know. It's not that high.
Right.
It's less than that. So we only getting 800 a year, so.
So we could use it as dedicated debt service going forward.
250,000 there.
Yeah.
The most.
Also, I had brought up in the past, and nobody did anything about it, is because we now make significant interest money on our checking account, I requested that a capital fund be set up that that money goes into, so it's earmarked for the new building.
And we're getting how much per month?
Anywhere from 29 to 35,000 dollars a month.
So 30, okay.
Yeah.
It's 360 a year.
Yeah. Enough to sneeze at.
No, it's enough, enough to pay interest. So I know we've talked about that at least twice. And I think we all think it's a good idea.
You know, right now it just gets dumped in the general fund, which is fine. It's still there, but I would like to protect it for the building.
Okay. Okay. Can we put that aside and say? Yeah, I'm receptive to that. Let's go back to the TIF for a second. If we put a lot of our TIF money into this, then we're not gonna have TIF money to pay for sheriff's cars and fire equipment?
No, the fire equipment and sheriff's cars, we can take out the safety services levy. We've got plenty of money. Now, we've got plenty of money to take all those, that equipment out of that fund. That's why we.
That's different because we used to have to go to TIF.
No.
To get, well, we bought cruisers out of TIF.
I know, we don't do that anymore.
Okay.
So we have plenty of money in the safety services levy.
Therefore.
We do, but we did that on purpose because we knew we would be paying for vehicles out of that fund.
Okay.
That's why we specifically went to that 2.6 additional levy.
All right.
I also raised the question of possible grants that might be available for a capital improvement like that. But the answer I got was, we didn't apply for that because we applied for parks. And everybody was afraid that if they, if you sent two, we wouldn't get any.
Right.
And I don't know how, what they use to judge, you know, how they make those grants or not. But I wasn't aware it was one or another. You know, the meetings I've been in at township level meetings in Columbus, a lot of them talk about starting a project, showing that you've already committed to one and keep reapplying for the grant. And I can't tell you how many fiscal officers and administrators spoke about how it was a pain in the rear to do that, but they eventually got the grant they wanted. They didn't give up on the first refusal. And if you show that you're committed to doing it and already putting money into it, you have a much better chance of achieving the grant. That's what they said.
So we're listing all these sources. We had ARPA, we had TIF. We had interest.
Yeah. Interest is gonna be at least until the treasury's dropped.
I'm gonna put a question mark down here on grants.
How much do we have in ARPA funds?
5.23.
5.23.
5.23.
Uncommitted? Or we have commitments out of that?
It's uncommitted at this moment.
Okay. So if we start at the high end, the 5.8. So then we're down to 5,289,400. That we would have to. So then if we look at payment wise, if we were to finance that, and then we can pay back the principal and interest and then some between the TIF and the interest. I mean, those two alone add up to 600 a year. And on the schedule, we're talking about a varying principal, anywhere from 171 to 510. And interest from 182 to 22. Not to sidetrack anything, but we spent about 6 million dollars on the safety service center. How long did it take for us to pay that back? 20 years?
We paid it off in 2021.
Okay, so 2021 minus, we paid it in 15 years. Cause we dedicated it in 2006, I know that. 15 years is not bad. Especially this one away. Right, this is a 20-year schedule? So if the debt services in the neighborhood of, you know, the principal and the interest, 532, give or take. And we've, we've identified 600. But I've got to imagine if we go from 20-year schedule to a 15-year schedule and something is. Yeah, we got the 600,000 or so. 25% increase. Yeah, 25% increase probably. But it does seem like we're in the ballpark.
Yeah, but we'd have to, we'd have to figure out when we could refinance. So they have to, they have to do it a certain way that you'd be able to refinance it, usually after the 10-year mark is when you could refinance.
Would this be considered a government loan or a commercial loan or what?
It's a, you would have to buy, go out and buy bonds.
Okay.
So what they do.
So it's a bond issue?
Yeah, so for a 20-year bond, they're gonna go out on the market and they're gonna seek investors.
Okay.
And they're gonna find a bank and they're gonna issue notes in denominations of like 100,000, 150, 250. And that, and then they get it all the way up to 5 million. And that usually goes through one bank is like the holder of all the certificates. And then you pay that bank.
Gotcha. But there are fees and everything else associated with all this that aren't part of the bond or the debt service?
Uh, it's probably all in there.
You really think so?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking we oughta not think 5.85, we oughta think 6 million. We don't know when they come back with these changes, it might, it might go up another 100, 200,000, so. Just a deal or a nice round even number of 6 million. But we, we ran into that with the Rossi property where we had the bond schedule and everything else. And then so many years into that, we refinanced, but we couldn't do it again for another six or eight years. So there is, there is that possibility, Rick, of refinancing, but we don't know what the timing would be.
Yeah, it's usually 10 years. You can't refinance before the first 10-year mark.
So.
If you do want to be able to refinance, I think you have to pay a higher interest rate to get that.
When is it, 37 before we finish Rossi?
Yeah, 2037.
Ouch. 2027 sounds a lot better. So that's nine tenths of a mil on the levy. That's what we're collecting.
Maybe. But just remember too, when that bond runs out, we will have lost our ability to use that money to pay for Rossi Park in the future. So, because once that bond issue goes away, that whole levy goes away.
I understand what you're saying.
Cause it was for just a 30-year period.
How much have we been siphoning off of that income to put improvements in real support?
It's probably 50 to 100,000.
We've only done phase one and we done phase two.
Yeah, but it pays for electricity, it pays for all the internet, it pays for, it pays for all of those things, water.
Okay.
So.
I understand.
Just in the back of your mind, this is, I don't, I don't mean to bring this up again, but this is why I was trying to get you guys to do a park levy, because I know eventually you're going to really need it.
We know.
Dooley knows.
We know we're gonna need it. So Kim, who, remind me, who's Bradley Payne?
This is our, they, Andy Brozart is within, um, with them, Bradley Payne. And they're like our advisor, our financial advisor.
Okay.
And then they work with a bank to find us the money that we need, the notes that we need.
Okay.
And they'll work with Fifth Third, who's already, you know, we kind of already brought them into the fold, so. But Fifth Third may not be able to do it, you know, beyond a 15-year note. They might have to, that's why, there's a difference between doing a 5, 10, 15-year note versus doing a 20 or 25-year bond.
Okay.
Like once you hit the 15-year mark, you have to go up to a bond.
Can we look at what the schedule would be for a 15-year?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just as an item.
Yeah, we could, I mean.
The 5.2 for 15 years, just find out what the debt service would be.
Okay.
Does mortar or Morton, do they finance?
They do, so they do have financing options as available too. So they will pay for it and then they, then you have to make payments to them. But we can find out more how that works through them.
Yeah, just to compare, which is a better deal.
Yep.
Did they say, I might have asked you this before, but did they say how long it would take to do the project like this?
I did not ask, but I will ask that.
Just wondering time wise. Might be quicker than we think.
Yeah.
Depends on whether they're in any business or not. We went through that period there where they wouldn't even quote anything.
Yeah.
So we don't know until you have a big backlog or what, it could work just the opposite.
I was hoping by the time we got around to needing it, like by the time we go through the design process and, you know, maybe the interest rates will start to come down. Cause I just think 5.85, it's really high.
Yeah.
But.
How is Bill willing to operate with construction?
Uh, those, that option three can be built, especially the way they've just now turned it. It'll fit on our property and we don't have to touch either building during the construction phase. So that worked out well.
And if we had to move equipment, we could park it over.
Yeah, we can just move it over to the park or, you know, we can always, if something happens, we can, if like if they have to come over here, we can move this meeting room over to the safety center, we'll just make it work.
Or we could talk to surrounding communities and see if they have any extra base space. More portal to portal issues, but.
Yeah.
We'd probably come up with some work around. Possibly, possibly the fire station. I don't know if we're allowed to do that. Put a service vehicle on the fire station temporarily.
I guess we had to.
We moved the, uh, moved the monthly recycling in the fire station last Saturday. Cause it's pouring down rain.
In basery.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Gave room to spread out. And we took some styrofoam, some containers and things like that. Rick, do you have any other?
Yeah, it's just a comment.
Yeah.
I would venture to guess it's probably gonna take, um, I don't know, five or six months to do the plans. And then, then we have to go to BZA to get approval because it's a conditional use in a residential district. And then, um, maybe fall-ish and it becomes like you bid it out over the winter.
And that gives you time for two interest reductions coming in 2024, right? Well, somehow.
If we get some of that TIF money they owe us back.
Yeah.
But somehow don't we have to spend the 5.23 by, before the end of the calendar year?
We have to have it appropriated.
Oh, okay.
By the end of 2024 and then it has to be spent by 2026.
Okay, that's, we didn't understand that.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay.
That's good.
That is, correct me if I'm wrong, but that detail, that's the only thing that is time limited, right? Everything else, like the TIF and the interest and we can all put that into a capital fund.
Yep.
Okay.
Do they want rates, like residential mortgages or?
Uh, it's, well, it'll be closer to when like we go to bid it out.
Yeah.
That's when you'll do the bond issue.
It'll, there'll probably be.
Hopefully, yes.
It'd be 30 to 60 days from when, when you get a quote. And then that would be, I'm drawing a parallel with the home mortgage. So that would hopefully be a situation where if we paid it off earlier, we wouldn't be penalized.
Right, but you just have to make sure you meet the milestones set in place by the bond. But a note is different. So notes, you can get them for a year. That's, that's where if you do a 15-year note.
Yes.
You can actually do it year to year and roll it. So you could actually take it, take out a note for one year. And then if you need to roll it, you can keep rolling it, um, to get a better interest rate. But if you do a bond issue, you can't do that.
I would appreciate being educated a little more on that. Sounds great.
It is a gr, it's a great class. We just took, we went to Columbus back in October and that's when they talked us about notes versus bonds. And it was a pretty helpful class.
But the opposite could occur too. If the year comes up and the rate's higher.
Yeah, then, yeah. But I think we're gonna start to see, at least what they're predicting is that by 2025, they're gonna be substantially lower than they are now.
Well, hopefully we'll have fiscal sanity restored at the national level, we'll see.
I don't think so, but you're a positive person. Anything else you guys can think of?
Oh, there's probably a lot of things we haven't thought of.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. There are always like, especially when you start to build something, you're like, oh, I should have thought of that.
I think this is a darn good start for a work session.
Okay.
So what do they need from us now to?
I just need to tell them specifically the things that we just talked about.
We'd like options three modified.
Right, and then I'll do what Phil did. I'll cut that, well, actually I can just put that on the copier and then I can scan it, send it to him.
Thank you, Beth. So do we want to set up that special fund sooner as opposed to later?
Sure.
Or I'm just thinking of pros and cons. We can't take action in a work session.
Right.
The pro is that it's. Mid-February, next meeting.
Yeah, I won't be here. I could make the original one, but I can't make the second one.
The pro to doing that is it's set aside, dedicated for this, this topic.
See, that's what I would like to see. I would like.
What I was gonna say, the con is that we can only use it for that building as opposed to in the general fund. And if some emergency comes up, we're in a bond.
Right.
Is that a, like a sinking fund, Rick?
It's, it's a dedicated fund. I mean, you're basically taking the money and saying, instead of putting all these other buckets, it's gonna be one bucket.
Right, okay.
And we know what's in the bucket.
And we want it to accumulate in the interim till we use it.
Yes.
Yes.
It's just, it's like two teenagers getting a down payment for a house.
Yeah.
They just keep putting money.
Can that be made retroactive?
Can what? Are you talking about 30K a month for a couple of months?
Well, it's more than a couple of months.
No, I think he wants you to go back to 2023 and take whatever interest we got and transfer it from the general fund.
That's when I start talking about.
To the capital fund, into this capital fund that we just talked about creating.
I'm, I'm a little worried that we've already committed a lot of money. I don't, I'd like to see how it shakes out, what it really means before I say yes. I'm not opposed to it, but I'd like to see.
I will push for it.
Well, I'd like to see.
Yeah.
What gets hurt by doing that?
If anything.
Yeah, if anything.
Future decisions may get hurt. You know. You know, future wants, not needs, I'm not talking about needs, I understand needs, but there are also wants that I think can be put on the back burner.
I think that none of the trustees want to see a, a new levy added, or let's say, an increased amount of levy, especially in the later years. So don't like to raise taxes anyway.
Well, we can do this building without a levy.
That's ideal.
That's the beauty. So can we, I'm just gonna drill down a little bit more, can we just create a tracking line item within the general fund that is called Building Capital Fund, or something like that?
But is it dedicated?
But it's still within the general fund.
Is it dedicated?
Well, we're acting like it is, but technically it's not.
I would like it dedicated.
I mean, we're tracking it, we're tracking it, it's like it's a little fund.
You could do that with any amount, any fund source or money source. It doesn't accomplish what I'm requesting.
Okay, so if we do the dedicated fund and we have an emergency, we can't take that money out of the dedicated fund? Yeah.
Well, if, if the moves weren't made that generated the kind of money it's generating now, you wouldn't have those funds anyhow.
You're missing my point. I'm saying if we, if we have, and I can't even imagine what it would be, but if we have some emergency that we would need to access capital.
You what?
Until, until you're committed to.
Future TIF.
The down payment or something.
Future TIF and future interest.
I didn't hear you commit any TIF to a down payment, all we were using was the ARPA.
Yeah, I think we'd rather save the TIF money for a dedicated revenue stream to pay the bond payment.
You know, sitting there, but, you know, you can, you can say, okay, this year we're gonna use the TIF money to prepay, or we're not.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's a quarter million or whatever the number is, I think that covers any emergency.
Except that that's restricted in how you can spend it. Okay, we have to spend it in support of the TIF area, on paper.
What constitutes a TIF area?
It's like within a certain mileage of the, the corner up here at Field Dirtle and Montgomery Road.
Five, five businesses up there. Back part of Meyer Parking Lot, I think, and Huntington Bank, and Home Goods, which used to be, I can't remember.
That home, it used to be Sam's Club.
Yep. All those four or five properties generate the income for the TIF, that is the TIF area. And isn't that a Mallard Crossing or whatever that?
Waterford?
Waterford, thank you. That apartment complex over there is part of it too. The only TIF area we have.
The TIF money can only be used for capital, so you can only spend it on capital, you couldn't use it for operating.
Yes.
Do we own a piece of property across the street?
Yes.
Can we sell that?
Yeah, we could. I don't know, we'd have to have somebody come give us a.
Because that could be a nice piece of a down payment. We don't plan to use that for anything.
Correct. It's worth a little more now because it has sewer.
Do you know that?
Well, it costs us a lot, a little more to put that sewer in.
And how many other parcels do we own that we don't do anything with, like little tiny?
We own a bunch of pieces in Lovon Park.
Yeah, all these twenty-foot wide lots.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah?
Oh, tiny homes.
Yeah, you heard that story, didn't you, how that got created?
Well, that's twenty feet.
What predecessor, the Cincinnati Enquirer was selling newspaper subscriptions, and if you signed up for a newspaper subscription for so long a period of time, they gave you a lot. A twenty-foot wide lot, so many, so many feet long and whatever, and you put a trailer on it.
Is this like the Oklahoma Land Rush or something?
Well, it goes back to that kind of, it's that kind of concept, I thought it was kind of, kind of interesting. And then we got all these paper streets over there.
Yeah.
That you can't build, and you end up vacating, or not. So it's, uh, it's crazy.
Or if we had a significant property, we could just turn it to cash.
We have, we have traded lots, trying to build Shore Park or something down there. We've got some, some properties we've traded, like properties, to see if somebody can go in there and take three of them and build a small house on them.
Yeah, that, that'd be interesting, to see what we have that's saleable.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't think you're gonna be getting much out of the isolated twenty-foot wide lots.
I mean.
You couldn't bury people in them, could you?
Then we have perpetual, then we'd have perpetual.
Care.
Rick, we'd have to deal with perpetual care.
No, it would just be for cremations only.
Oh.
Where you just spread the ash.
You have to know the ground.
Community ash place.
Oh, yeah. How about a scattering garden?
That's what he's talking about.
That's what I'm talking about. I didn't know the term for it, but.
Scattered garden, so he was correct.
You gotta leave it natural, so we don't have to know it, yeah.
We do have one right over here, I would think.
Yes.
Yeah.
They could own their own. Buy their own scattering garden.
Okay, all right, anything else? Executive session, we have an unscheduled for the night, so I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Bryan.
Aye.
Mr. Beck.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim.